I wouldn't describe it as a blind.
No, I'm blind.
No, I know. No, do you realize that my dad was born, my dad was already working at school.
Good. I'm live.
You know, I was trained from day one.
Everyone ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll reconvene into open session at 6:05. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us at the Cloverdale City Council meeting. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Ready to go?
We forgot them.
Where is it?
It's in your heart.
They're right around the corner.
Back here?
Base City Hall.
Well, there's a, there's a, an American flag above City Hall directly across the street. Maybe we could all face that direction if you don't mind. And I apologize. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, I apologize for that. Call when you're ready, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Report out on closed session.
Mayor, regarding closed session, the council adjourned closed session. However, we'll reconvene after the, after the regular meeting.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations? Anyone? Seeing none? Any changes or deletions to the agenda, David?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. If anyone here would like to make a public comment? Seeing none. Move on to communications. Any written communications sent to the council?
No communications, Mayor.
Thank you. Student liaison report.
From the 16th to the 26th, the Jefferson PTAs are selling seized candy that's called Be My Valentine to achieve their fundraiser goals. And tomorrow, there's going to be a ELAC meeting at the Jefferson. The Washington is currently selling their yearbook, and the eighth graders will visit the high school Tuesday and Thursday to get an idea of what to expect into coming into high school. Lastly, the high school got the board to approve their plan to upgrade the agricultural facilities in their garden. They will have a new greenhouse, outdoor learning area, and a barn for next year for like the new classes that we're introducing. And on the 26th, it'll be the last day to order your yearbook at a discounted price. And on Tuesday, there was a boys soccer game at 4:00 PM and a girls soccer game at 5:30, which was against St. Helena, like here. Also, there was a girls basketball away game at 5:30 and a boys basketball home game at 5:30, which they competed against Kelseyville. Then on Thursday, the boys and girls soccer team will go to Roseland Prep to compete against them, while the girls basketball will have a home game and the boys basketball will have an away game, an away game against Middletown at 6:00.
Great. Any questions? God, I hear you have a lot of homework.
I'm a, I'm a little behind.
If you need to go, we understand. And we thank you for coming here and giving a great report.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to E. E1, a proclamation for Planning Commissioner Sandra Huberts. Is there anyone that would like to read it? Perfect, I will. Proclamation of the City Council, the City of Cloverdale, presented to Sandra Huberts for her service to the community of Cloverdale on the Cloverdale Planning Commission. Whereas Sandra Huberts was appointed to the Planning Commission by City Council in 2019, where she served for four years. And whereas during her term on the Planning Commission, Sandra participated in the city's update of both the housing and circulation elements of the general plan, downtown zoning ordinance amendments, as well as several other zoning amendments related to housing and other subject matter. And whereas in her role as Planning Commissioner, Sandra reviewed many development projects, including the Alexander Valley Apartments, Alexander Valley Healthcare Center, Dry Creek Rancheria, Vista Oaks, Bumgardner Ranch, and 101 North. And whereas as a dedicated commissioner and believer in continued education, Sandra attended the League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy. Whereas Sandra Huberts is a strong advocate for Cloverdale's senior population through her current work at the Cloverdale Senior Center Multipurpose Center. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim its appreciation to Sandra Huberts for her numerous contributions to the City of Cloverdale as a member of the City Planning Commission and for her role at the Senior Center furthering the needs Cloverdale senior population. Be it further resolved, that I, Todd Lams, Mayor of the City of Cloverdale, along with my fellow council members, do hereby acknowledge the dedication, service, and significant contributions by Sandra Huberts on behalf of the citizens of Cloverdale. Dated January 24th, 2024, so ordered myself. Good evening.
I do have a few words. Good evening, everyone. It is a great honor for me to be here today, accepting this proclamation from the City Council, the Cloverdale City Council. Serving on the Planning Commission has been a privilege and a responsibility that I have cherished for the past four years. The opportunities to contribute to city growth, particularly in the areas of housing and community development, have been both challenging and immensely rewarding. I would like to express my heartfelt thanks to the City Council, the dedicated staff, and my fellow commissioners. Your support and collaboration has been the backbone of our collective achievements. Every discussion, every plan, every decision was a group effort, and I am proud to have been part of such a dynamic team. As I transition into my new world, my new role with the Sonoma County Area Agency on Aging, I carry with me the invaluable experiences and lessons learned. I look forward to continuing to serve our community with a special focus on advocating for the needs of the Cloverdale senior population. Thank you once again for this recognition. It is a memory that I will always treasure. Thank you.
Around, anyone want to make any comments?
Sandra, I'd just like to say thank you for your dedication, and it's refreshing to see a planning commissioner that's as dedicated as you were. So for that service, I thank you, and good luck with your new venture.
I want to thank you for your service and for everything that you do for actually all the residents of Cloverdale, and the enthusiasm and creativity that you bring to everything that you do.
Everyone else has thanked you. I'm going to do the same. I remember the first day I met you, I knew I had a superstar, and I said, you should be in my seat and I should be somewhere else. And I still think that. Cloverdale is very lucky to have you, and we're still lucky to have you doing this from a higher level, and we appreciate everything you've done for us. So thank you again. Victor?
Yeah.
Sandra, I just want to thank you. It was a pleasure having you on the Planning Commission, and I know that you always did all your homework, and you kept us on our toes, and you always ask great questions, and I think the projects that you were involved with were better because of your input. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra. I think the proclamation is not enough to recognize you for all of your hard work and dedication. As our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director echoed, you always put in 110% in reviewing all the applications and the, you know, you were steadfast in ensuring that the City of Cloverdale's interests were addressed first and foremost with every project that came forward. But more importantly, I look forward to working with you in your current role with the Senior Center. And your, your achievements and your contributions will not be forgotten. So, look forward to continuing to work with you, Sandra.
Not yet. When it's time, I would imagine, yeah. Okay, moving on to E2. Recognition, the 2023 Lewis Pete Paterka Emergency Management Award.
Mayor, members of council, this is a really exciting evening to receive this award and recognition tonight. Just a little bit of background. The Department of Emergency Management annually honors either an individual or a group or program for their outstanding commitment to emergency management by presenting the Lewis Pete Paterka Award at the Emergency Coordinators Forum. This, this award is named after the grandfather of emergency management, Sonoma County, Mr. Pete Paterka. He led what was then known as the Sonoma County Department of Emergency Services from 1977 to 1985. And for many in the emergency management field, he's considered a legend. On behalf of the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative, our former chief and emergency management director, Chief Jason Ferguson, prepared an application on behalf of Resilient Cloverdale and was submitted to Sonoma County for consideration of this pristine acknowledgement. A little bit of background about Resilient Cloverdale. Resilient Cloverdale is an effort that came out of the, kind of the result of the Kincaid Fire, where we really looked at our emergency response and carefully addressed, you know, some of the deficiencies that existed at the time. And we've since developed a really robust emergency preparedness program. I want to acknowledge the representatives that are here and that were participating in that process all along, including our former chief and other key members of our community. I won't name them all, and I hope they will introduce themselves tonight. But joining us is Jeff Duval. He's the Director of Emergency Management, and he's here to present a low acknowledgement to the council, and in part on behalf of the Resilient Cloverdale and all the volunteer work that's went into ensuring that we are a much more prepared and safer community as a result of all the hard work that, that went into the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative. And I want to particularly acknowledge Rebecca Ennis, who's leading up the current effort to continue to implement our emergency preparedness program through clover, through clove-ready. So, thank you to all the volunteers who've committed time and energy to this effort. I think Cloverdale is better off because of it, and I think this award tonight is an acknowledgement of all the hard work that you've put in. So, Mayor, if I can, I'll turn it over to Mr. Duval.
Absolutely. There we go. Thank you very much, City Manager Kelly. Jeff Duval, Director of the Department of Emergency Management. And good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and City Manager. As the City Manager outlined or talked about, Pete Paterka was definitely a leader before his time in emergency management. And when he first took office in 1977, he was tasked with taking a Cold War, World War II civil defense program and really forward-thinking. What is the disasters of tomorrow? What does it look like 10, 15 years from today? And where do we need to be? And because of that, that leadership and that stance that he took, he laid the foundation of what emergency management looks like here in Sonoma County and across the board in the state of California. And after his time in 1985, he remained very active legislative affairs and matters across the board in the state of California. With that, as the City Manager had outlined in 2020, the city led an effort to launch the Cloverdale, or the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative, to start looking at the lessons learned from 2019 Kincaid. And from that came planning committees that composed wide diverse community stakeholders, and that were tasked with a comprehensive strategy on how to increase the capacity of local stakeholder organizations and working together. And from that came six different goals for the group. And it's exciting to sit down and listen to that. The majority of those goals are either in progress or have been met, ranging from program management of the initiative to overall readiness of the city by investing in systems, relationships, and resources, increasing the level of readiness of the citrus fairgrounds, establishing a local community organization active in disasters to support the city's readiness and response initiative goals, creating a communication strategy that included branding and platforms, but more importantly, hosting events that amplified awareness of the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative, and bringing together those regional stakeholders from Cloverdale, both residents and organizations. The Resilient Cloverdale Initiative has demonstrated a very well-developed system in a community that's had its shares of fires, floods, power outages, winter storms, and snow, and more, and what it means to be prepared, to be prepared before, respond together, and go arm-in-arm together into recovery. When you step back and look at what Pete Paterka did, and looking for solutions outside of the box, and what fits our community and engaging the whole community, and the thought process, this initiative has fit that. I want to say thank you to the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative for your outstanding commitment to emergency management, not only here in the City of Cloverdale, and what you've brought forward as a grassroots program and as an example for other programs across the state. But with that, on behalf of the county of Sonoma and the Sonoma County Operational Area, I'm proud to present the 2023 Lewis Pete Paterka Award to both the city and to the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative.
Absolutely. Becky, do you have, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, because I really shouldn't be the person to say something. So, I, my name's Becky Ennis, for those of you that I haven't met personally. And I am truly just the backbone person to all of this. These folks out here, Suzie Cummings, Linda Chafin, Bob Cox, Sandra Hubert, Sterling Peck, Kay Wells, Kirsten Tellis, it just, these are the folks, and just a few. We had others that wanted to come, but they unfortunately couldn't be here. But I'm just here to support them. They're the ones that are here to do all the work, and so we're hoping, and we're excited to work with Chief Parker now and kick off 2024. We've got some great ideas that we want to keep working on. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to say something? Never afraid to get in front of a mic.
Yeah, no, but you know what? It's okay if I don't have to anymore. But Mayor, members of the council, city staff, thank you. This award is pretty incredible, and I was very excited. I submitted it on purpose because I've never met a more dedicated group that deserved this award more. They deserve it. They're still, to this day, meeting once a month on Tuesday. It was every week. And they figure out how to get messages to this community. If for some reason you have no idea how to evacuate your city, how to make a go-bag, you haven't been paying attention, because it's been at every concert here in town, it's been at every citrus fair, it's been at anything that you can come up with. It's been set up, the information's been handed out, it's been stuffed in 900 backpacks of elementary school kids. The job's been done, and they continue to do it. There is somebody that needs recognition who's not here tonight, and his name is Daniel Holmesy. He's the reason we got started. His mom is here tonight, Kay. She's in the back. She's been a part of this since day one. But it was her son and the love of his mother that really kind of got this ball rolling after the Kincaid Fire. He taught us a lot. He's an expert in the field, and although he's exited from it, he really got the ball rolling, and we kind of took it from there. And the number one goal for this group was to really put Cloverdale on the map and being a more resilient community. And I think they have aced that, and they deserve this recognition tonight. So, thank you.
Chief. Anyone else? Kay, you want a microphone?
Good grief.
I love her.
Well, I think this is great. They're getting a proclamation. There was a lot of planning, a lot of work. My son was very pleased to be part of it, Daniel. So, can't think of anything else to say.
Thank you, Kay. Anyone else? Bring it up to the council. Want to go through?
Good evening. I'd just like to thank all of you. As, this is huge, and thank you for presenting it to Cloverdale. As a, somebody that went through one of the Tubbs Fire down in Coffee Park, I only wish that this stuff was there, and it would have been a lot more organized. Granted, it was a tragedy, but there would have been more organization to it, and I think a lot of things would have gone better. We learn from that. And to the Kincaid Fire, we're only learning, and we're only getting better every day. So, thank you very much, and we really appreciate it.
I just want to take a second and thank everyone for all the hard work that was put into this program. Chief Ferguson, thank you. Bob Cox, thank you. And Becky, thank you. Like I said, if it wasn't for team leaders like you, the project wouldn't have gotten done. But thank you.
I remember walking into the very first meeting, and the energy that you felt from Daniel Holmesy was second to none. Who would, who would think that this stuff is exciting? You know, you walk in, and he has everybody jazzed up and yelling and pumping their fists in the air and ready to go. We were lucky to have his expertise coming from San Francisco, and this is what he does there, his evacuation plans. I'm preaching to the choir because everybody is in the first meeting that's sitting in the audience. You guys have been here since day one as well. So, it's like, I'm kind of talking just for no reason. Sorry for that. But between Daniel and Diana, I mean, Kay, your kids are wonderful, and I love them to death, and can't thank them enough for what they've done for Cloverdale and what you guys have done for Cloverdale. When they say it takes a village, here it is. Here's proof, because everybody can know how to get out and get out safely because of the village that you guys have. So, thank you again. We want to take a picture. Actually, Kevin or David, would you like to say anything?
Thank, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, I just want to acknowledge the group's energy and continuing to further the message about the need to be prepared in case of an emergency. This, this, we're going to continue to, for the, for the members of the public, we're going to continue to work with Rebecca on kind of reaching out to the neighborhood levels to neighborhood levels to implement more of the Resilient Cloverdale program. So kind of keep your eyes out for that. And again, I want to thank Mr. Duval for coming up today. We are going to continue to partner with Sonoma County. Sonoma County has made tremendous inroads in terms of their own preparedness efforts. And we do work collaboratively with the county on our emergency response. And we, we look forward to continuing to work with the county on how best to respond to local emergencies. And just again, want to acknowledge the team effort. I think everyone has acknowledged the work that, that Mr. Holmesy brought and his, and his mom to this effort. But again, the team, and I know it's, it's an ongoing commitment and our, our team is committed. So, so thank you.
One last thing. I was looking around the room. I don't see Jeff Peters here and I want to make sure that his name gets mentioned as well. Jeff has been a big part of this as well and working very closely with Johannes from the county. Can't thank you guys enough for the radio antennas and the, and the ways to communicate that you've created for Cloverdale that it's second to none in this county. And it's amazing. So thank you so much for everything that you do to support us around here. And I know that this radio system's pretty cool. He's tried it out a million times. And Susie, I know you, where'd she go? There you are. So I know you love that once a week checking in. So thank you, guys. I, I will be. We want to take a photo, but we want to do it out in the lobby if that's okay with everyone. Meet everyone out there.
Somebody ratted me out.
Nope, didn't say a word, Derek.
I'm not going to speak.
Let's check it out.
I think so. Maybe I should check the agenda.
Bacon?
Bread?
I guess nobody's coming back in, huh?
I doubt it.
We hang that in the conference room, huh?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We're moving on to F1, Presentation of the Ferber Park Survey Results. Kevin, is you?
Mayor, council members, we're going to turn this over to Mike and Hector since they really had worked really hard on this. It's just, we've, we presented some ideas to the subcommittee and we kind of got some differing opinions about what would be great, what would be the best way to proceed with Ferber Park. So we decided to do a survey. Survey was up on the website for about three months. We had almost 500 respondents. And Mike was really leading the way on getting the survey up. And Hector's a big, a great big part of it too. So I'll just, Mike, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kevin. As Kevin said, it was up for about three months. We posted it in October. Took it down recently. We had it on the website. We had flyers in the parks. We tried to do a pretty good push. We were aggressive about marketing this, just so we can get as many people's input as possible. So as you can see, this, this survey itself is specific to Ferber Park. You can see our different age ranges. Just so you know, I'm going to jump through this pretty quick. It's in your packets. It's online if you want to review it and take more of a deeper dive, get into the weeds. But for these purposes, I'm going to go through pretty fast. So you can see that we had a well range of ages, different frequencies of park usage, primarily weekly, but some folks come monthly rarely. Quite a few daily. Moving to typical time of use, morning, afternoon, evening. Some of this was to also help us figure out a good time for, you know, maintenance or other things like that. Like, when are the majority of citizens utilizing our parks, specifically Ferber? And these were, now we're getting to the questions of the meat of this. So favorite activities in Ferber Park. We were actually surprised, walking jogging was one of the highest rated ones. You can see exercise, fitness, picnic, pickleball, horseshoes, little league, soccer, playgrounds, and other, where people were able to specify what they do in the park. And how would you rate the accessibility for folks with disabilities or mobility challenges? And we were actually pleasantly surprised by this one, good and excellent, being relatively high up there, fair, with quite a few, or some with 10% or so with poor. We know there's a few challenges at this park that we want to address and Hector's going to get into that in a little bit. Next question six was how would you rate the current park facilities? So that was more fields, courts, landscaping, et cetera. Again, good, fair, excellent. Pleasantly surprised with that. Not necessarily surprised. We know Hector does a lot of work in the parks with his crews, but. So this was one of the big questions that we were, we were most excited to see was most desired amenity improvements. It gives our staff the ability and council the ability to know what do we need to do to this park? What are the residents really looking for? And you can see across the board, there's a, it's relatively even between three and five on that scale. But new playground and improved sports fields were the highest ranked improvements as far as amenity scale that people were interested in. More walking and jogging trails was high up there. Disc golf baskets, permanent bag toss, similar to what we did in City Park, and outdoor fitness equipment and additional pickleball courts ranked in there as well. Of course, you can dive in here as a deeper dive for each of those if you'd like. But I'm going to move to question eight, which is our most desired infrastructure improvements, which are things like a functioning baseball field scoreboard, some parking improvements, which would be like maybe signage, striping, things like that. Creek interpretive signs, similar to what we do at River Park. A staircase ramp from Grape Gables Way was in high importance. Additional picnic tables, barbecue pits, improved creek access were some of the most desired. You can see the numbers again on this slide. Question nine were where people could fill out their forms. We, like we said, we had quite a few respondents. We had 250 folks answer this question. And Kevin, Hector, and I went through every single one of them. Luckily, the survey kind of makes this cloud for us where it kind of, the larger words are the ones that showed up more often. It's using AI tech to figure out what people in those 250 responses put the most. And you can see playground, a basketball court was important to folks on that side of town. That just kind of gives you that. We're welcome to give you all those results if you'd like to see them. But again, it's 250 individual responses you'll have to read through. And that was the same with question 10, which was what type of events or programs would you like to see organized in parks, in the Parks and Recreation Department? And this is feedback that I'm very interested in with the Recreation Division that we are, you know, that's in infant stages, but so we can have an idea of what kind of things in the parks people will want to see. So different fitness classes, events for seniors, yoga classes, activities, et cetera, et cetera. How would you prefer to receive information from recreation programs was also interesting to us. And some of these are going to be questions that we put on the Recreation Survey that's going to go citywide. But for the Ferber Park area, you can see that many are interested in the city of Cloverdale Facebook, Cloverdale Newsletter, which we are very happy to see is high up on the list. Recreation and Parks Department website, which I'm also very happy to see because as you've seen in past meetings, the website's got a revamp. So there's a lot of information on our Parks and Recreation site as well as a few other options. And we want to be able to, from the marketing and outreach perspective, utilize all of these. But it's nice to know what, what features the public wants to see the most or where they'll get that information from. So now we're into the results. And I'm going to give this over to as far as our short term and long term goals. Over to Hector, our Park Superintendent.
Thanks, Mike.
Hector, if I can, just interject momentarily for council. So what we're going to cover next, what Hector's going to review and get Hector's our Park Superintendent, is some proposed ideas, both short term and long term. And really, the way to think about this, this evening is, I'll try this one. Council direction to give us feedback on the survey results. Of course, the action we're requesting council to take tonight is really just, first and foremost, to receive the survey results, provide any feedback that you think's important in terms of the results that our city clerk just presented. But next, our Park Superintendent Galvan is going to present some, some steps that can be taken immediately or now within the current budget year. And we'd like to get your feedback and input on those, on those next steps. But likewise, as we begin developing the next two-year budget, and of course, we will be working with council to schedule a goals setting workshop and also an expenditure plan for the two-year budget process. What expenditures would you like to include in the budget to develop some of the more larger park improvements? And so that's kind of the, sets the stage for some of the feedback that we're asking council to, to share with staff tonight. Again, I think the, the survey results are, in my opinion, very informative and I think provides, you know, really, some really helpful community feedback on, you know, what their desires are. Ultimately, that is council's decision and direction. But we're, we're offering some, based on the survey results, offering some suggestions as kind of a starting point for council to consider. Ultimately, we want to take your direction, build that into the budget so that we bring that forward. And also as part of a goal setting to kind of reflect what improvements you'd like to make in your, one of your key community parks as part of establishing the goals. And of course, part of the background context for this is that staff has been working on formally developing a recreation program based on what we perceive is a tremendous need for, or an interest in formal city managed recreation programs with our partners. So some of the proposed next steps kind of reflect that perspective is, you know, if we were to establish a formal recreation program, what are some of the improvements that might kind of help develop a formal rec program for the city? So with that said, I'll turn it back over. Thank you, Hector, for that interlude. I just want to give a little context to the, the, the next slides that you're going to present.
Thank you. You're going to make my job a lot easier going over this, a few items here. So like, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff, like City Manager David mentioned, so we gather, we took the information from, from the survey and split it into two categories. One of them, the long-term, the short-term projects that we think we might be able to accomplish during this year's budget. And, and we took the longer, if you want to put it back up there, Mike, the, but you're messing me up here. And so, yeah, no. So, so one of the, I just, I was going to elaborate on each one of them. So, I mean, this is easy, like the doggy bag station. We currently have two in the park. So, you know, I'm, you know, I was proposing I had a third one on the eastern side of the, on the eastern side of the park. The two sets of cornhole boxes, we have some experience now performing the insulation. We just installed a couple, four of them at the Second Street City Park. So this is something we can, this is that project we can also do in-house with a minimum budget impact, just the cost of the boxes.
Hector, could you let them know what we're thinking in terms of the location for the bag toss?
Sure. So if you guys are familiar with Ferber Park, it's just, it's just right east of the, of the existing playground. We already have a pad there. So it'll be, it'll be an easy, easy. We have a really nice and flat area there. So we, it'd be a nice and easy area to, to build. So that'll be an easy, easy job to do. And then garbage receptacles, we're thinking of adding some recycle receptacles around the, around the playground area. And we have some of those in-house as well. So those will be able to put those in there. And then of course, disc golf, a partial course. We've been getting some inquiries on that. And creek access is something we can do in-house as well. Have a couple of really good ideas about where we can access, where kids can access the creek to look at it. I think that's what this request is all about. And then the park kiosks, yeah, we're proposing to hopefully maybe install two of them. One on the east side of the park and then the other second one on the west side of the park. And the striping of the existing parking lot, that's something we, Mike, we also think we can accommodate during this year's budget. So this is, this is just the list of the short-term results that we think we can get done this year. And then as far as the long-term results, those are going to require more, obviously they have a greater budget impact and it's going to require more, more planning and, and.
Mike, can you advance this slide?
So that's, that's something we need to discuss further. The new playground structure, like Mike mentioned earlier on the, on the survey, that was, that was high up there. From the, and that's one of the inquiries that the community has been, you know, telling me on my phone when I'm about working. That's, that's, that's the, that was the main, the new playground structure. And the scoreboard, actually, I just got a couple of texts on my way over here from, from the league that, you know, to not to forget to mention the scoreboard in Ferber Park. So I'm mentioning now, if you guys are watching. And then the staircase access on Grape Gables, we know originally I was, I was just thinking about installing some railroad ties. But thinking about it now, there's so many kids that, from ages that range from four to six, that get down there. And I think we need, we need something more permanent and with, with some railing so they can hold on and safely get down to the park and play. So that's one of the things that was on the, on the scoreboard as well. And the other suggestions, of course, was basketball was pretty high up there. And the other suggestions, of course, was basketball was pretty high up there, and additional pickleball, pickleball courts were, were high, and jogging and exercise was, you know, was, you know, the the highest ranked. And we have some good ideas on that as well. And right now, we're just looking for some direction, see where to take this project forward.
Thank you both for this. Hector and Mike, you guys did a great job on the survey. I was one of your 500, so it's great to see it. Great information. So let's go around and talk questions, concerns, comments. Councilmember Bagby, want to go first? Okay. Vice Mayor.
Hector, Mike, thanks. I, I was, been talking about this with David on a couple items too that I have listed down, and, hey, Mike, could you bring up that one of the short-term? And I'm just trying to figure out creek access here. Are we talking, are we talking from, also, we've got Ferber Park, the bridge and all that, and we know where that is, but are they talking going up winery trail too?
No, I think what they were suggesting was right by the playground where the kids play, right directly across on, that's, I think that's what they mentioned. I know there's a lot of vegetation, invasive species that we need to remove.
Right, because some of the things I think, and I mentioned to David on this too, is that winery trail and going up, up from Ferber Park, and a lot of people that do use the park go up the trail and they go around, and we were kind, we kind of came up with the idea if we have any excess benches around town.
Yeah.
That's been thought of, I've been hearing that for a while, is up there at the turn, right at the winery ruins, Mr., or Ferber's ruins up there. People have been suggesting put a bench there for I don't know how long. That would be perfect for a lot of the people that are walking, and then also down, maybe up a little farther from that existing doggy station. That's one thing, and I'm just kind of trying to capitalize on stuff that we already have, you know, where we're not spending a lot of money on it. And then also, what was the other one that came in there? Lights. We discussed this before, and I know the scoreboard's a hot item. If there's power down there and we can incorporate it long-term, maybe, looks like it's going to be long-term, but man, that would be great if we could either get a scoreboard that has lights on the back of it for the pickleball court and maybe one shooting over towards the playground. Because I know it closes at dusk, but in the summer, it's not closed.
Yeah, I know.
People down there playing till God knows when.
Great ideas, yeah. It's just, as far as like jogging goes, one thing, you know, David, Kevin and David were discussing it earlier, what I've been hearing from the community is that they want the Ferber Park, they want to extend the Ferber Park Trail. So we're hoping to hopefully get them across foothill, go on the winery trail, and make a big loop around Hot Springs, and that would add another mile or so. And then we can put markers and benches along it, and that way we can extend that jogging. And so that, that was, that was one of them. The lights is a great idea.
Perfect. My suggestions right there, I saw in the short-term, and I think those are doable without a pile of money, you know, so.
Sir?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Perfect segue by the mayor. Money. David, could you just explain to the council and to the audience, where the funding for our parks come from and how it gets funded, the Quimby Act in particular?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Walter, for the question. There really are what I would consider three sources of funding that's used for, for parks. Of course, the, the main source of funds for park improvements is, is your general fund, and that's the, you know, that's a, why we want to bring this forward now so that as part of the budget, we can really look at the cost of the, whatever improvements council would like us to make so we can reflect that as part of the budget. And, you know, the budget's always, always a constraint because we have a lot of desires and interests and, and limited funding. But the, but the other sources of funds include Measure M Park Funds. We receive an allocation of Measure M Park Funds of about 130,000 annually. Measure M is a voter-approved measure that was approved for a 10-year period, I think starting in 2018, to fund parks and park staff. Council has allocated, made a decision on the funding allocation to have about half of that fund a position and the other half towards park improvements. So that's something that council can decide is how would you like to allocate the Measure M Park Funds, recognizing that, that those may have a limited, you know, those may be available for a limited period of time. And then last but not least, development impact fees. And you, we, we, there is a nexus requirement associated with using development impact fees. Those are paid by new development, the community, and those improvements are intended to, you know, kind of support the growth in our community. And I think there, there is an argument for using development impact fees at, at Ferber Park based on the new population that's being generated by new development. We, we have to coordinate obviously closely with our city attorney on that, but that really kind of rounds out the source of funds that are available for, for funding park improvements at, at all of our parks. So I hope I answered your question.
You did. Thank you, David.
Any, I love the short-term list. Let's just start there. That's, I see a lot of it and things that you can do. And then the, the long-term, I know we've already had the conversations about some of the items that are on there. I think it's great. Is there any direction that we haven't given that someone would like to say before we open up to public?
I, I just have one. You know, at a lot of trails down in Santa Rosa, for the older folks like myself, the seniors, they have the trails and then they have the little stations where you can stop, do a couple chin-ups, do a couple sit-ups. It would be nice if we could sprinkle a couple of those along the trails. Personally, I live in Jefferson Springs, and the lighting and landscape district is responsible for the trail. There's a lot of seniors that work, walk that trail in the mornings and in the evenings. It would be nice if we had a couple stop exercise stations put in there, and I don't think that's very expensive.
That, that's a great idea. David and Kevin and I, Mike, were looking at those earlier today before the meeting. I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and I don't have those numbers with me right now, but I think the LNL District, Jefferson Springs, one, is pretty healthy enough to accommodate.
Yeah, just a couple, and you can add to them every year or just see what happens. But that's something we could do in the parks as well around the trails. Thank you.
Refresh my memory, City Manager, does Ferber Park fall under one of the lighting and landscape districts? Is that specifically eligible for some, as, would lighting and landscape be one of the funding sources?
Ferber Park, whether it's fortunate or unfortunate, I'm not sure, but is not located within, it's, you know, most close, most closely situated next to the cottages, landscape and lighting zone, the trail, the vineyard trail is, is part of the landscape and lighting zone. So some of the improvements there can be budgeted within the zone, but the, otherwise, the, the park itself is not included. And so it's, you know, again, there's a limitation on using LNL funds within, in the, within Ferber Park.
Yeah, no, adjacent, didn't know if it was included, but that's kind of, you know, one way to consider if, if we did want to move forward with the, that, a running path, that it would be one way to cover part, part of the cost without pulling it out of general funds or, or other parks. So that's good to know. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. We were intending to remove the horseshoe pits for the bag toss, and only, I think, four or three or four people indicated horseshoes was one of the things that they engage in in Ferber Park out of 500 people. And then the other thing is that as part of the Osti Road Apartments on Osti Road, they're required to do an off-site mitigation for some creek restoration. And Hector and I did meet with a biologist and walk that site, and we are hoping that that meets the criteria for what they're obligated to do under the state permit. So we may get some pretty much no-cost removal and creek restoration. Part of that may be a little bit more access for kids. Very nice. Thank you. All right, I'm going to open up to the public. Is anyone in the public that'd like to, please, sir, come forward? Mind, please state your name for the record?
Evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brad Horrell. I live on Pepperwood Drive, and as you all know, I'm here to talk about pickleball. But really, a couple of things I just wanted to say. First of all, I don't know whether you're aware of this, but Cloverdale's two pickleball courts are the only courts in all of Sonoma County that were built just for pickleball. Every other city has pickleball courts, but they're all converted from tennis courts. So we know how lucky we are. But really, what I wanted to mention is the stairway from Grape Gables Way down to the parking area, that on a frosty morning coming down those hillsides, for a guy as old as I am, I worked with Pete Peturka over 40 years ago, that's how old I am. Stairway or ramps would just be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that was high priority on the list, and I know that we've already got some ideas rolling, so it's great. Thank you, Brad.
Would that trigger a handicap on that side?
No, because there's a handicap access from the, that'd be the south side.
Gotcha.
Pathway, as, as we understand it, so, but they're looking into that, is what I was told on Monday.
And Mayor, Members of Council, one additional kind of piece of historical information related to the playground area, our Park Superintendent has shared with us that the, that that is one of our, our oldest playgrounds. The manufacturer of that playground equipment is, is no longer in business. The equipment is inspected regularly by our, our park staff. Our Park Superintendent is a certified playground inspector. He's advised me and Kevin that the, the replacement equipment to ensure that that playground continues to be a safe place to play for our, our children are getting more and more difficult to procure. And given its age, we, we think that, that that's kind of a priority from, you know, a safety perspective and a liability perspective. And of course, I think the community reflected in the survey results that it's, there's a lot, a lot of interest in a, a new playground. There, there's been a lot of developments in that, in that space around the types of equipment that are available, and it's, it's pretty exciting. I wish I could be a kid again. And so, you know, we, we, we think that that's, not only because of the community's feedback, but because of the, the desire to continue to, you know, maintain that equipment and the challenges therein, we, we, we view that as, as a high priority. But again, I, I know, I have great faith in our Park Superintendent and continuing to make things work. I just know it's going to get more challenging a, as time goes by, and i, if we were to procure some new equipment, it comes with warranties, and, and it's more, it's going to be more available because of the current manufacturers. Just again, something for, for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any further comments, direction? Councilman Bagby?
I have one more, more question. I, just on Q7 and the, the bar graph, Mike, if you want to bring it up, on the improved sports field, that scored really high. Hector, do you think that's like, is that an issue with quality of the turf, quality of the baseball field, or do you think that points more to the scoreboard and just other facilities for when there are little league games there?
On that, that item, you, it cut out the word scoreboard.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
But it's, the, the feedback.
And that's, that's what that means.
Yeah, so the feedback that I've been getting from the community, from all local leagues, they're not referring to the turf.
Yeah, because I, every time I go, and like, whenever you go to a game, it's like the field is pristine and the, the turf is, is really in good shape. The only time it's not in good shape is like on a day like this.
Right.
Where it's pretty soggy, which is why, which is why a ball field is located there. So I was confused, but it makes sense that they kind of want a better scoreboard and...
Right now, they're using a scoreboard that's like a two-by-two.
I, I, yeah, I've seen it.
And so they, they, what they were referring to was a scoreboard.
Okay, great. That, that clarifies, that clarifies it, because I was like, I don't think we can get that grass any nicer and that field any nicer, because you guys really prepped that and, and City Park baseball field, I mean, to a, a really beautiful level, so.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, gotcha. So scoreboard, loud and clear. Got it.
Hey, Hector, real quick on that, and I know you and I have talked about it, I talked about it with David, and when, at the parks, I think another thing that people refer to, and this is when coaches and some of the guys have come up, you know, on where the, where on the ball fields themselves, specifically baseball, where they transition into the, into the turf, how, you can't help it, that weed, those weeds are going to grow in there, and it was always a, a comment of like, could you guys cut that cleaner and kind of feather it down? Because especially the high school coaches were like, you don't know where that ball's going to go. It could hit that, that lump right there and head straight up, or go out and, you know, he, one guy mentioned, he's like, why do we have outfielders? The ball doesn't go that far.
Right.
You know what I mean? So you know what I'm talking about, is just cut those lines cleaner and you'd make everybody happy.
Yeah, no, sure, yeah, no problem. Yeah, that's, that's an easy fix, easy repairs, those are, you know, we do that every time we melt, but we can make sure this year going forward for the season, we can maybe cut it an extra time during the week, make that work.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Seeing nothing else, Hector, Mike, Kevin, David, thank you for that. Great presentation, great information, and I look forward to seeing the improvements. And then budget workshop for the long terms. Okay, moving forward, consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council unless council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Anyone want to poll any items? Anyone from the public want to poll any items?
Oh, move the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion.
A second.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes five zero, thank you. Moving into I, new business, I, one, adoption of the 2024 City Council Subcommittee, Joint Subcommittee, and Regional Board Committee Appointments.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. This, this item is to memorialize the direction received by the City Council at your January 10th meeting. You may recall, in December, council was circulated preference ranking forms to help council identify which council subcommittees and regional boards that you'd like to sit on or participate on. At your, at your January 10th meeting, council reviewed those appointments for each of the subcommittees as well as regional boards, and what's reflected in your packet is a, is a resolution that would adopt the subcommittee appointments, the regional board appointments, as well as set the meeting schedule for the, the council planning commission as well as the subcommittees. I did want to note, Councilmember Morganstern, one of the questions that came up was in regards to the Sonoma County Department of Health Services Health Action Council. The question came up regarding the status of that, that organization. It has since been taken over by a nonprofit organization. I want to thank Councilmember Morganstern for her background and research on that. So the, the only modification to the agenda would be just to remove that, that, that particular regional board from the list since they're, they're no longer seeking council, council appointments to that, to that board. But other than that, the resolution in the packet would adopt the appointments again as, as recommended at your January 10th meeting. Of course, council can make any adjustments as you see fit this evening, but otherwise it's ready for your adoption.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, concerns, changes? I see none. I'll open up the public. Anyone who'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Anyone who'll make a motion, the title?
Approved title only.
With it, with the change that David, David suggested?
They need you to read out the title, unfortunately, Councilmember Wheeler. I got a question for you real quick, Mike, on this.
Yes.
On the resolution itself, adopting the 2022 roster and then 2023 Subcommittee, should we change those to 23 and 24?
Yes, that's an administrative change, so I can make that, but for the motion, we do need to read, read out the title.
Read the title?
Resolution of the City Council, the city of Cloverdale, adopting the 2023 roster of Subcommittee, Joint Subcommittee, and Regional Board Committee Appointments and the 2024 Subcommittee Meeting Schedules.
So it's 24 and 24.
Yep, we'll adopt that as amended, and I'll make those administrative changes.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor, with the changes noted.
Thank you. All right, we have a first and second for you. Michael, are we good with that? Attorney?
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes five zero, thank you. I, too, discuss and consider... I two, discuss and consider amending the policy for the outdoor display of flags and authorizing the city manager to purchase and install a commemorative flagpole in front of City Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. Brief background before I give an overview of the summary this evening, the council has adopted a, uh, a, a flag policy, specifically the flag policy, uh, provides, uh, a direction on the flying of, uh, commemorative flags. Uh, that, that was adopted by council in 2022. Uh, subsequently, in 2023, an amendment was approved, uh, to the, to the flag policy by council, which included designation of a new, uh, commemorative flagpole. Uh, the, the amendment also reflected the location of the flagpole, uh, in, in, uh, in the plaza, in the, in the northeast corner of the plaza. Uh, at, at the time, the, there was a request by Rotary to include flying of the peace flag on the commemorative flagpole, and, and that, that, uh, that proposed peace flag was added to the list of approved commemorative flags. Uh, currently, as written, the adopted flag policy, uh, authorizes, uh, three commemorative flags. That includes the, the children's memorial flag, the, the pride or rainbow flag, and, and last but not least, again, the, the Rotary flag. Uh, since, since the adoption of the policy, uh, there has been some additional council consideration, uh, the, uh, of the, of the policy itself. Uh, the Rotary Club discontinued pursuit of the peace flag initiative, and, uh, likewise, there was a request to fly, uh, another commemorative flag, uh, referred to as the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors flag. Uh, at that meeting, or at the, at a meeting held of the city council in November, uh, council provided direction to have the, uh, flag policy reviewed, uh, by the Public Works and Facility Subcommittee. The, the Subcommittee, uh, made a number of recommendations to amend the, the policy, uh, to, one, designate a, uh, a, a commemorative flag, uh, pole to be located, uh, in front of City Hall. So kind of moving the location of the, uh, commemorative flagpole from the plaza, uh, to, to the front of City Hall. Uh, the identified location of the proposed new commemorative flagpole would be, uh, at the, uh, southwest corner, uh, kind of in front of the window, and it would kind of frame up the, the front of, uh, of City Hall. Uh, in addition, uh, there was direction for city staff to, uh, develop an application progress for, uh, a process, uh, and, for, um, uh, making requests to fly commemorative flags. So included in your packet is a, um, a proposed application, uh, for, uh, parties to request flying of commemorative flags. Uh, one component of that is, uh, to ensure that staff has adequate time, uh, to bring the request to council. Again, council is the, the party that's designated to, uh, review those requests, and the, um, the, the, the signature, uh, the application does include, uh, a, a requirement that the party, uh, set forth, uh, the, uh, reason for the flag that they're seeking to fly, uh, on the commemorative flagpole, along with, uh, signature of, uh, residents. Uh, currently, the, uh, form, uh, provides that, uh, someone requesting flying of a new commemorative flag would require, uh, twenty-five signatures of Cloverdale residents, and the person, uh, responsible for submitting that would be attesting to the fact that those residents are indeed, uh, residents of the city of Cloverdale. The amended policy in, in your packet does accomplish a few things. One, it, it removes the, uh, Rotary peace flag from the list of commemorative flags. Uh, it would add the, uh, Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors flag, um, but also in part based on the request, uh, of the, uh, the Public Works Subcommittee, uh, there, there was a request to add a city flag, a city of Cloverdale flag, uh, to, to the, to, um, fly on the commemorative flagpole. So kind of a couple of things that we're, uh, uh, seeking relative to amendment of the flag policy, again, in summary, is, uh, amend the location of the commemorative flagpole, uh, modify the list of approved commemorative flags, removing the Rotary flag, uh, adding the Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors flag, uh, as well as a city of Cloverdale flag. Uh, last but not least, uh, the resolution in your packet would approve, uh, the commemorative flag flying application for parties to request, uh, and outline reasons why they, uh, are requesting council to consider adding a commemorative flag, uh, to, to our flagpole. Assuming council supports the direction, uh, outlined in the agenda tonight, uh, we're also requesting your, uh, direction on the purchase and installation of, of a new, a new flagpole that would be installed in front of City Hall and would become our, our, uh, new commemorative flagpole. Um, so Mayor, Members of Council, I'll kind of pause there, there's kind of a lot to digest. Uh, happy to walk you through, uh, any or all of the elements that are discussed, because there's, you know, there's, we can look at the policy, uh, we can look at the application, uh, and, uh, we can also look at the resolution and make sure it reflects, uh, council direction. Um, if council, uh, doesn't feel comfortable with the proposed amendments tonight, uh, I think, uh, you know, this is something that could be, uh, reviewed in more detail at the Public Works Subcommittee, uh, but otherwise, I think it is, is ready for your consideration this evening, if you'd like to move forward.
Thank you, David. Councilman Walter?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with all due respect, David, we've reviewed this two times already at the Public Works Subcommittee, so I'm not quite sure what that committee would be able to come back with. But, um, uh, if I understand you correctly, we're approaching this, uh, with two different subjects. One, the flags that are authorized to fly, and then secondly, the flagpole. So if we could go back to the flags that are authorized to fly, um, did I not hear that there's another, uh, individual or group that would like to have their flag flown as well?
Uh, I have not, uh, heard of another group at this time that's requested a commemorative flag.
Okay.
Uh, what, what, in terms of the, the policy, uh, it would, the amended policy would remove the, the currently approved, uh, Rotary peace flag, um, but would add the, uh, Sons and Daughters of Pearl Harbor Survivors flag.
Well, to that particular item, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with it the way it is, as far as the list of flags, and, um, the, um, application to fly a commemorative flag, um, I guess that's going to be a work in progress. We've got something now, and I'm sure if we decided to change it, we, we'd be able to do that. Thank you.
I like everything that the Subcommittee came up with, um, the direction, and I support all of it.
Councilman Bagby? Vice Mayor? Thank you, first off, to the Subcommittee for doing what we asked, it's awesome, we came back with a plan, and I'm going to support it, just like I said I would. I think it's a great plan, and it, it works out really nice. The only question I have is on your application, when you say residents, are we talking over the age of eighteen, things like that? Because I don't want to see a family with six kids getting to come in and, and bring that in as part of their, their group, if they're all six years old, four years old, a newborn, things like that. Is, is there limitations on that?
Uh, cur- currently, we, we didn't get down to that level of specificity, uh, but, you know, certainly the, the application itself could be clarified. Um, you know, ma- council may want to provide direction, for example, if, uh, uh, you know, is it, uh, no more than two members per household to reflect, you know, maybe, uh, uh, two spouses and, and not, not add a, a long list of, of residents from one, one, one particular address. But that, uh, I, I can, I can add that the resolution does, does provide, uh, the authority to the city manager to, uh, make minor, uh, amendments to, to the, to the policy, to the application, uh, just so that there is some flexibility there. Uh, you know, of course, if it's, if it's minor, if it's something more significant, we would bring it back for council. Uh, so that's something we could certainly clarify in the application, uh, you know, no more than two, two residents per household.
Well, I, I don't know if I would do that, because we have a big working class here, uh, and, you know, there's sometimes multiple families in the same household, so I, I might just set it at an age range versus, uh, how many from a household, because I would hate to limit families because they live in multiple families in one house. But I, I, I don't think a six-year-old or a newborn should have the right to vote on a flag here. If that makes sense. That's the only thing I had, I think it's great. Say, did you have a...
And maybe we could think about, kind of maybe, see eighteen and over. Um, it, it's difficult to kind of set an age, as far as, uh, if you wanted to say, what, what's the cutoff? Is it ten? Is it fifteen? Is it thirteen?
Well, and I didn't even want to give them go as far as voting residents, I wanted it to be residents.
Right, right.
I want to, you know...
And that's a, that's a good suggestion, Mayor, because voting residents or, or electors, there's a lot of other requirements that would end up being, being attached there. So we could, we could definitely look at, uh, potentially, as the city manager mentioned, whether it's eighteen and over, or whether it's a kind of a cap on, on, is it a, is it an eighteen and over? There are, there may be families with many folks over eighteen, um, or is it more of a, is it per household or per family? I know it's, it's basically on the honor system as well. Um, I think that it's just getting the signatures here, there's no verification process, if I, if I understand correctly, right, uh, city manager? It's just more of, of an affidavit they sign, so potentially even limiting it as per family, two per family or something? Just, just to also not get into the situation of a household means different things to different folks regarding, and maybe media family members, maybe something like that, something limiting, maybe we could look at that.
Thank you. And I know it was mentioned, and I'm sorry, my iPad decided it didn't like me tonight, there was a mention of having to do this every year for a flag. Is that in this resolution? Because I think that you might, we might want to discuss that, and that's a lot of work for the city staff and for the public to come in every year, I don't know.
That, that is, uh, i- i- embedded in the application. Um, the, the intent here is, uh, to, when, when there's a request made to fly commemorative flag, i- it's for a one-year period. Um, and, and part of that is to, uh, not discriminate, because one party may get their request in, uh, sets, sets the time, and that kind of locks up, uh, the, the, the use of the commemorative flagpole, you know, indefinitely. Um, the, the thought process is that, uh, it, you know, it, council, if council authorized a commemorative flag, it would fly for, uh, one year, and a, a new application would need to be submitted, but without the, uh, necessary, uh, signatures, because they've already kind of verified and validated the, the, uh, the support for flying of the, the commemorative flag.
Thank you.
And just a clarification there, maybe I could ask a question on, on the application, but it's, it's really when we're talking about flying the flag, it's, it's the application period, but the actualy of the, the flying, the flag, it's mostly contemplated more of like the month, right? That the, the fly itself, it's not the entire year.
Anyone want to comment, or?
Please, um, you know, I was under the impression that the, uh, list, um, of commemorative flags was going to be presented as a consent item to the city council in the beginning of the year for us to ratify that again, um, as opposed to having people come in and have to fill out an application. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I don't think that's, it's, 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 uh, uh, written to provide that direct guidance, but I think, uh, to your point, Councilmember, uh, Walter, you know, we, we could establish an annual process where, where council looks, looks at the, um, the, the list on an annual basis.
Well, I, I'm just thinking like, uh, uh, Mr. Green was in with the, uh, Pearl Harbor Survivors, uh, so every year, he has to come in and reapply to have that flag flown. Correct? I'm, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with that.
Right, and, uh, just, in, based on, uh, brief consultation with the city attorney, right now, there, there is a list of approved flags. Really, the application process would pertain to new added flags.
Okay, yeah, I, I get that then. All right. And how do we assure that the organizations are, are still, um, uh, active, and that we're not flying the flag on an organization that has, uh, gone by the wayside? Is that just going to be a...
Well, I, I think what, that's where the one-year timeframe comes in, so if you get a new party, uh, or new, uh, a resident that asks for a new commemorative flag...
Correct.
At the time that the, the application submitted, council would review the, the timeframe for flying of that flag.
Yeah.
Uh, the way it's, kind of, the way the policy, uh, or the application is written is that that flag would be flown, that, for the period of time approved by council, for that next year, uh, and, and so, uh, you know, unless directed by council, it would only be flown that next year. If council said, you know, we want this flown every year, uh, then, then I think we would need to embed that in, in your policy.
I, I guess the question, though, David, is what happens if an organization disbands, and we don't know about it? How, how do we verify that they're still an active organization? Like the, uh, Hometown Heroes, every year Bob Cox goes down the list, calls the parents, make sure the individuals are still in the service. If they're not, the flag comes down.
I, I think if we, if we didn't receive a new application, the new, that, that, that flag would not, would no longer be flown.
Okay, all right.
And maybe the difference, if I could jump in, Mayor?
Sir?
Maybe the difference here is on the approved list of flags, maybe there was always the due diligence of, we're coming up to, to that month and checking with the organization regarding the, the applications. I think as the city manager mentioned, if they don't apply again, it's because they don't, they don't want, they're either disbanded, or no longer an organization, or no longer are asking for the flag. Um, just a quick comment as we, as we talk about this, just the, the disclosure, um, the application itself doesn't guarantee flags to be flown. Um, the, the reality is, the flag, the commemorative flags are the, uh, city council's official sentiments, meaning it's government speech. It's not a, it's not a forum for any flag to go up, but just because they fill out an application, the council still needs to decide and decide whether it's, it's something that the council, it's, it's actually speech that the council wants to make.
That's it for now, thank you.
Okay. Bagby? Good. All right, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make any questions, comments, or concerns? Please, come forward.
My name is Reese Foxen, and I live in, here in Cloverdale on East Third Street. We moved here in the year of two thousand, and we moved here, and we figured we could either live in the town or out of the town. We lived on a hill. Um, at that time, this was the only city or governmental agency, because the county recognized it too, who did not recognize gay marriage in, as, as a way of living. I was committed to Cloverdale. I have never felt or had a problem here. I immediately, or within a year or two, went on the Human Rights Commission, representing Cloverdale as their commissioner, and I was there for several years. But it wasn't until Carol Russell got on the city council that the gay marriage was recognized, um, and changes began. Up to that point, literally Cloverdale was not part of the county. Uh, you could go to the permit department, they refer you to Mendo, because Cloverdale didn't, wasn't in it. Anyway, but we moved forward, we joined the county, we became part of it. Eventually, I became the library commissioner, and that was my thing. We were part of the county. We weren't the only thing in the county, but we were part of the county, and I loved it. It was great. However, in the last three years, I've seen this city walk backwards, and it seems to me that this flag issue, the way it's been handled, the way it's being written, is a good example of how we're walking backwards. I am still very committed to working for Cloverdale to the best of my ability. That changes with time, but the best of my ability, I'm working for Cloverdale. But sadly, what I'm seeing is a loss of my own pride in Cloverdale, both literally and figuratively, and that's sad. So, think about that as you do this. So, think about that as you do this. You guys have brought up some of the questions I've had, some of the issues that I have with the thing. But it really needs to be thought through in a little different way. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese.
Hi, good evening. Jane Elias, Cloverdale. Um, thank you for bringing this item back. I do just want to point out a couple of things that I, I don't agree with. The comments about how many signatures can go on this and from how many, how many signatures from a household or the residence or the age. I'm sorry, a newborn's not going to put their name on the application. They can't even sign it. They can't even write. I don't see that as really an issue. I see that really is, is kind of petty, actually. And I would really hope you'd consider not limiting it to eighteen years old or older. There are teenagers in this town. There's student representation on this council. And they have a voice. They may not be able to vote, but free speech and, and items that are of interest to them, I think they should have that ability to put forward a motion. And if they go and gather signatures for some kind of a commemorative flag, I think that's really important. I don't know what that age range is, but I hope it's not eighteen or older. I, that, that's all. As far as the application process, I, I see there's a bit of clarity that needs to be put forward. The, I get the approved flags that are on there. I think what's really confusing is that if somebody brings forward an application for another flag to be flown, how is it addressed with the current flags going forward? Is that something that the council will look at every year in January at the beginning of the calendar year? Because some of these flags that are mentioned here do have affiliations to groups that are or, an organized group and others don't. So I would hope that if somebody does bring forward a new application, how is that addressed? That if they're, they're asking to have it flown on one of these months that's already committed, does the council need to confirm that this is what you've committed to for this year? How are you going to reach out to perhaps the, the ones that have been approved, that they are no longer approved, that they've been switched out? I, that, I, I didn't see any clarity in that. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. David, do you want to make any comments on that? For clarification?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think, again, um, the, there's kind of two components here. One is the, the amended flag policy. The amended flag, flag policy provides the list of approved flags. The application is, again, for, going forward, for any new requests that would come before the council, there's a, there's an application process. And I don't see that as much different than, you know, any other request that council receives is just formalizing what that process looks like. At the time of consideration, the, well, stepping back, one, one of the things the application does is, uh, set for, set forth a timeframe for when coun, when staff would, uh, respond to that request and be able to bring that forward. And then we've, you know, given, uh, provided, you know, a sixty-day timeframe for, uh, staff to process the request and to bring it forward for council's consideration. Ultimately, uh, what the, uh, application states is, you know, one, one flag would be displayed at a time. Uh, so if, for instance, you received a multiple requests for commemorative flags during the same timeframe, you'd have to kind of look at that and how you want to address. Uh, ultimately, it's council's decision whenever there's a, a request being made to consider whether you want to add it to, to your policy or not. Uh, and included in that decision is the, um, uh, how, under the, um, uh, section two of the display, it says, each flag shall be displayed only for the period of time approved by the city council, which shall be no longer than one calendar month. So it, it would give council the authority to specify the, the, the timeframe. Um, and, and ultimately, we'd bring that back for council's consideration by way of resolution, which would then, you know, memorialize that approval in, uh, uh, you know, in, in written form. Um, you know, some of the other elements, I think, of the policy that, uh, are, of the application that are, are, are critical, uh, is that the commemorative flags, uh, would not, you know, promote or oppose a political party, wouldn't provide religious, commercial, racial, or other discriminatory themes, otherwise provide explicit or lewd or obscene themes. So we're trying to, you know, again, there's some guidance around what kind of commemorative flags that the council, uh, could consider.
Thank you, David. Okay, seeing no more public, we'll bring it back to the council. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to support this tonight. And, and I'll just be, I'll be very brief, I'll be very clear. I'm not going to support spending money on a commemorative flag poll because from the beginning, this has been an effort to create a separate but equal situation. There is absolutely nothing preventing us from flying Pride flag or other commemorative flags on city hall's flag pole beneath the American flag. There isn't anything shameful about it. There isn't anything embarrassing about it. Um, I for one, when we first started flying the, the Pride flag at city hall, I was proud to be a resident of Cloverdale. This whole operation has been, as Reese Foxen stated, this has been a giant step backwards. And, um, I, I cannot support it and I will not support it. I won't support the spending of taxpayer dollars, um, to do this. It's wrong. There's just no other way to say it. It is wrong. It is wrong to have taken this up, to have, to, to start with. Um, and I really appreciate Jane Elias's comments and talking about, well, gee, if you're going to have, if you're going to require signatures, let teenagers, because they're the next voters, they're the next residents. But I'm actually appalled at the net need for a signature page because the buck stops here at this council. You know, we are a representative democracy. If we can't manage our way out of this wet paper bag, what the hell are we doing here? So I, I can't support this. I actually will, um, make a motion that we go back to our previous flag policy, that we drop, um, the attempt to purchase a commemorative flag pole for out front of city hall and we, we go back to our previous practice of flying commemorative flags on city hall at the appropriate time.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second for it? Seeing none, the motion dies. We'll move back into comments and questions and concerns.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, quite frankly, I, I'm very pleased with this. I think it's long overdue. I think it's a step moving forward that we finally have our arms around an issue that's perplexed, uh, many people in this community. How do I get my flag to fly for my organization? Well, now we have a standalone poll that's going to, that's going to embrace at the top, uh, the particular organization. Gay pride is going to be represented right up there alongside the American flag. It does not have to fly on the same flag. And it's nothing divisive. It was getting our arms around an issue that was long overdue to be revamped. And I support it a hundred percent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I agree. I support this a hundred percent. This policy has been, uh, this has been at the forefront of, uh, numerous meetings and it's been, uh, kicked back down to the subcommittee meeting. And the subcommittee actually sat there and, and like council member Walter said, uh, we've put our arms around this, we've put a lot of thought into this, and these flags are going to be represented right up front. It's doing two things. It's putting it out front and it's also, it's framing city hall and making city hall out there. That was another consideration, putting a second. Cloverdale's the only city that has one flag pole. So putting it out there does two things. It frames and it makes city hall look better and it's wrapping its arm around these flag policy. I think this is a very solid flag policy. So I'm a hundred percent on board with this.
Just going to reiterate what Vice Mayor said. We are the only ones, as far as I know, with one flag pole. Everywhere else in the city, cities, and even in the county uses two. Uh, Windsor just dedicated a new flag pole recently. And so I am proud that we are actually doing this in a way that can avoid litigation and is done in legal manner instead of the way that we'd been doing it before I got here. And so I'm proud of our council for going back to the subcommittees, doing what was right for our city to make sure we're safe and flying things in the, in the proper way. So with that, do we have anyone that wants to make a motion or any further comments?
Well, just one more comment, Mr. Mayor. I'm also, uh, happy to say that we're finally going to fly the Cloverdale flag, uh, on the commemorative pole when other flags are not being flown. So that's another plus for me.
Move to approve the resolution by title only?
So before we get a sec, could I, could I just make a comment on, on the, the issue regarding the signatures? One option is to leave it as is and, and see whether it becomes an issue and then bring it to council or have an amendment done if it is even an issue. We just leave it as is as far as the signatures without any kind of restrictions and then we'll see and evaluate.
Yes, we have a motion on the floor?
Hold on one second. We do have to read that motion out by title.
So Vice Mayor Wheeler made a motion by title only?
No, totally. Just for the record, you have to read at least the title. So if you're saying by title only, you're reading it just the title, so you don't have to read the entirety of the resolution, but we do have to read out the title. Resolution of the city council, the city of Cloverdale approving, one, an amended and reinstated flag policy for the outdoor display of, of flag by the city of Cloverdale. And two, a commemorative flag flying application providing procedures for the city council consideration with request to fly commemorative flags on city flag poles.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And really quick for a point of clarification, is the authorization to direct city manager to purchase and install a new flag pole part of that resolution?
It is.
And if you, if you could also make clear the, the second part of the recommendation, which is what our, uh, city clerk was mentioning, the authorizing the, uh, and direct the city manager to purchase and install a new flag pole for installation in the front, uh, southwest corner of city hall.
Should be part B on there.
And that's the second part of the recommended actions under the agenda report.
Is it worth amending the resolution to include that language, Jose?
The Public Works Subcommittee recommended the council consider and adopt an amended flag policy that includes a new location for the commemorative flag pole in front of city hall and an application for requesting city council approval for the flying of commemorative flags. Authorize and direct the city manager to purchase and install a new flag pole for installation in front of southwest corner of city hall.
So Jose, for the record, that's more of a council direction versus part of the resolution?
That, that's part of, that's a, that's part of the motion.
We have a second from council member Walter as well.
Second.
Thank you. Council member Bagby?
No.
Council member Morganstern?
Aye.
Council member Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lins?
Aye. Passes four to one. Thank you all for your hard work on that. We'll move into subcommittee reports. Finance, admin, and police were scheduled for February fifth. Homeless Community Advisory Group, scheduled for February 12th. I'll just run through them real quick because we have a closed session. Joint City Schools is April 15th. Planning Sustainability, February 20th. Public Works and Facilities, February 27th. See no legislative reports or letters of support. City manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Uh, the dog park grand opening is, uh, scheduled for this Saturday, uh, January 27th at 10 o'clock. It is a, a, a rain or shine event. We will have, uh, uh, there, there is rain forecast, um, for that morning, so we will have tents, uh, available to, uh, provide some, uh, respite from the rain, but, uh, hopefully it's a light rain and we are looking forward to, um, a festive, uh, grand opening for our new dog park. Uh, I think it's meeting with, uh, a, a lot of accolades by the community. Um, secondly, I just wanted to, uh, announcement that, uh, at the recent, uh, board of the Zero Waste, that the, um, board and, um, the staff of Zero Waste, uh, has entered into, and I think it, it may have closed by now, Escrow on an, on a new property, uh, located in Windsor for, uh, locating a new household hazardous waste facility, uh, in northern Sonoma County. So that will really be available to, uh, serve the residents of, uh, Cloverdale, Healdsburg, and Windsor, uh, whereas currently, uh, the only household hazardous waste is at the Meacham landfill south of Petaluma. So kind of exciting. It's, it's going to take a little while before, uh, uh, facility's actually constructed, uh, but, uh, the board has taken the necessary steps to, uh, purchase the property for the future, uh, construction of a, of a new facility that will serve, uh, northern Sonoma County residents. So pretty, pretty exciting.
Thank you, David. Uh, council, uh, city attorney? Thank you. All right. Uh, council member reports? I was going to say what David did, so I won't talk about the dog park, but on February eighth, we also have the Mayor and Council Members Association. We are hosting them here in Cloverdale. So all of mayors and council members and city managers and city clerks and everyone is invited here and we're looking forward to a great event. Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Okay.
Yes, uh, future agenda items?
Perfect. Thank you.
Ready?
Ready.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, uh, bring the council's attention. I had a, we tried to have a short conversation earlier today, um, city manager, Kelly and I, um, regarding the board, the, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors' consideration of policies around the creation of enhanced infrastructure financing districts, um, in Sonoma County. And subsequently had a, a shorter conversation with, uh, James Cameron at, at, at SETA, RCPA. Um, I'd like to, with the, the council's support, uh, direct city manager to stay on top of, um, these, this developing issue with the city managers group and also the other, you know, general managers of the, the JPAs, specifically RCPA, because that is a potential funding source, um, for that agency, um, especially in light of the new, uh, legislation around, um, climate resiliency organizations. That's one of the possible funding sources. So, um, I think that the, the phrase, um, you're either, uh, at the table or on the menu, um, this is the kind of thing that, that is, um, definitely applies to. And, uh, yeah, we just need to keep a, a very strong watch on that and, uh, let the supervisors and the county administrator's office know that, um, we, like other cities in Sonoma County, um, have considered that as a, a solution to some of our funding gaps. And, uh, we want to be part of that conversation and not find out what they have in store for us. So that would be, uh, a good thing to pass along to the city manager to, uh, keep on, keep in touch with them on, on that issue and then report back to the council to, you know, as, as they have, um, further discussions at the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
The question?
Oh, go ahead.
David, in reference to, uh, council member Bagby's comment, would this, um, be a pool of money that we could ask the county for curbs and gutters on Cloverdale Boulevard on the south side where Church Lane and Lyle Lane come in?
Yeah, a little, just a quick background. So, uh, city of Santa Rosa is working on establishing, um, uh, enhanced infrastructure financing district. And really the way to think about it, EIFD is kind of the, uh, heir apparent to redevelopment. It's a tool that's used to, uh, capture growth in assessed valuation or tax increment to help fund, uh, improvements, uh, within, within the project area. Uh, in this case, Santa Rosa is, is establishing an EIFD, uh, to, uh, fund, uh, infrastructure and other investments in their, in their downtown. Uh, so, uh, the county is quickly responding to that by, uh, starting a conversation with the board about, uh, policies around EIFDs because the county is the largest recipient of, uh, local property tax revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And with the EIFD, that, that, that increase in tax property, tax revenue would, would go back to the, to the district. And with the EIFD, that increase in tax revenue would go back to the district for such things as curbs, gutters, sustainability, you know, the whole host of infrastructure that's needed. So the mechanism for Cloverdale would be to consider similar steps in terms of establishing an EIFD within our city. I think certainly looking at the area that we've been doing a lot of work in in terms of water infrastructure is the Six Acres project area and the South Cloverdale water area where they lack a tremendous amount of infrastructure improvements. The policy could be looked at through that lens of how would it affect us as a city if the council wanted to take up establishing EIFD? And I think it's something we should do and to kind of Councilmember Bagby's point, you know, let's look carefully at the policy as it's being developed or considered by the Board and make sure that our interests are taken into account with, you know, assuming there's an interest by council of the possibility of establishing an EIFD, you know, within the city, within our, you know, our former redevelopment area.
Yeah, I'm wondering about that project out on Asti Road and First Street, that low-end income housing. And the big problem that we seem to be having is who's going to pay for the sidewalks all the way down to Citrus Fair Road? Is that a type of project that would fit into this program?
Yeah, I think so. I, you know, it's an area where frankly, I need to evaluate and research a little further. Again, it's just like redevelopment where the increase in assessed valuation, that increment, that growth in taxes gets to get reinvested back in the area. So, you know, it certainly seems like, you know, with a project being developed there for affordable housing, which could potentially increase assessed valuation, would provide a, you know, a financing tool to fund additional improvements. And it's not just the tax increment that's a revenue source. EIFDs can also bond for revenue. So it's another mechanism that allows for local agencies to bond for improvements. And, you know, again, we need to look closely with our city attorney's office on this. I think, you know, like redevelopment, it would be the EIFD that would issue the bonds so as to alleviate some of the, you know, requirements or necessary of the city to maybe do that, where you look at the voters within that district to approve those bonds. So, you know, I think to Councilmember Bagby's point, you know, this is an area we should kind of track and make sure our interests are considered because this is something we may very well want to look at as a potential tool for use in our city.
Thank you, David.
One other thing I would like to get on a future agenda item, if it's okay with everyone, is the Eel Russian Project Authority. For those of you that don't know, it's the Potter Valley Project. It's going forward, they're removing multiple dams on the north end, on the Klamath and then the Eel. And what people in Cloverdale don't realize is we are the very low end of the water that we receive from these dams in Lake Pillsbury. And we're going to have some serious water issues if we don't make other arrangements at this point. And it's being said that the days of having a yard or a garden are gone. And so I want to have the ERPA come in and clarify some of these so that we can understand where they're coming from and how Cloverdale can survive without water from these places.
Mayor, I'm happy to coordinate. I think our local contact is really the staff at Sonoma Water and Supervisor Gore is involved in this as well because they authorized the establishment of the authority. See if we can coordinate a presentation to council on this.
That'd be great. And then after that, maybe the Russian River Water Set Authority to see the other side of it. Not on the same night, please. But, you know, it's, you know, it's a hot political button. I'd like to hear both sides for Cloverdale. Anything else for future agenda items? City Attorney, do I need to keep this open so we can reset this back to closed or can we actually adjourn this into closed since we have nothing to report?
You're right, Mayor. At this point, we can end this meeting and adjourn back into open, closed session again.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, we'll, meeting adjourned at 7:55. 15 minutes, so 8:10.